I'd like to start off by saying, good evening, chair, and everyone here, and everyone here tonight. Thank you for coming out, showing us here in the city of Greensboro. As always, we're opening up a prayer tonight, and I ask that councilor give the opening of the prayer.
Yes, sir, let us pray. The rest of God's in which is thank you. We thank God for another opportunity to just wonderful witness of this year's city. We pray, God, that you will touch the ladies around me today. Give us the knowledge, give us the wisdom to make the decision that a better man could decide in your kingdom. We thank you, God, for just blessing us back in you. You's a great God, you's an awesome God, and you was a merciful God. And I love you, God, because you was a forgiving God. Ask you, God, to just be and guide us in the way that you have us to go. This is my prayer this evening in Christ, and I will do prayer.
Amen. Thank you so much. May the message be with you. Those who come from the present, I see that it comes to be upon them. I think Councilor Moore will go later tonight, but she will not. Next on our agenda is number three, the approval of our August seventh, twenty twenty-three, Republican session meeting. Councilor should receive an email about City Attorney. If you have read over those meetings, I am saying a second, a motion, and a second to approve those meetings for our Republican session. That obviously is second.
Motion.
Second.
It's been second and a per discussion, a per discussion, all of the paper that we have on my right hand. Now, this decision. Next on our agenda is approval of our executive session minutes of August seventh, twenty twenty-three. Councilor, you have those meetings? If not, I'll pass it to you. Just that one thing. That's got to be a short sweep. I am saying a motion, and a second to approve the executive session minutes of August seventh.
Motion.
Second.
It's been second and a per discussion, no per discussion, all of the paper that we have on my right hand. Thank you so much. Next on our agenda is Florida's street update.
Good afternoon.
Hello, how are you?
I am. All right. First, I would like to point out and address some of the things that councilor brought up at the last meeting. And to say that he was so right in doing so. One of the concern, but the cleanliness and the look of our city and street. So what I want, I'm going to try and explain is that department section based on it. Right now, we pay up what I call a high member T. And it comes on our day-to-day thing. On a, but instance, on a Monday, we, we try to fit in the stuff like grass cutting, asphalt work, boy haul, picking up paper, cleaning the street curb, that kind of stuff. So we try to do that kind of stuff on a Monday and Tuesday, and then we're starting around maybe Tuesday through Friday. To go through the route, take three and a half to four days to do, and that basically a six-man group. You, you need three people with the bag hold and dump truck, and you need three people on the, on, uh, litter, on the dump litter. So you can see, which we already short, we got five and eight six on record. So if we trying to say cut grass, pick up paper, then we're not able to do a lot of other stuff that maybe one of the councilmen may see they didn't give a point. We just don't have nothing to do. And if we did that concern what was brought up, then we're not able to do what we were doing. So we basically shorthand trying to do everything with five people. I did talk to City Manager, and if we were in talking to try and get a dedicated grass cutter crew for the spring and summer line, where they can go cut grass and clean the street, that type of, and be able to time to do some other stuff. At boys, and when it's a concern that councilman brought up, or it would make it two weeks in a row where he had to free out from Wednesday to next. Like I say, taking three to four days to do the route, but if on Wednesday, Thursday, some come up and we have to abandon the route, you're gonna have that type of time throughout the city, that we just not gonna make it through picking up on the pickup. So we work on it, if we got, you know. At boys, grass cutting, and I mentioned that, we do try to get grass cutting. But if, if you got a person out on, and, and if you want to make it a five-man group, if you got a person out on the mower, cut, and then you got two or three other people doing some help, that person on the mower is not able to cut, stop, edge, weave, blow. So a lot of the concern that I've been getting there, you cut the grass, but you didn't edge, you didn't, you just can't do it. So I just wanted to mention that for, to say that being shorthand, it can't do it, you know. And I'll get to the asphalt part of, of what we've been doing. Like they've done a lot of asphalt and paperwork, we take some large, some medium, and some small. We take on the large pots of asphalt, knowing we're not gonna get it right by hand. In a large spot, we take on that calls for a paving machine, that's something we don't have, but we do it anyway. Some of it come out good, some come out of paint. Take Main Street, that's a big section, it should have been done with a paving machine, but we did it anyway. It has a hump in, and that's something I'm trying to figure out to get, get out there. We got two options on that, dig it up and redo it, which I reckon not, or I'm gonna try to heat it, take two blow torches, heat it, get it soft, scrape it down, and try to get the hump out that way. So supposed to been tried that Saturday, and then worked out, we didn't get a change to the same. So we still got that on the list to do. At boys, that equipment going, our dump truck is currently in the shop, it needs a transmission. That's one of the problems you may have with completing the route, it comes to big problems. If you ain't got the dump truck together, then you can't make it through. As early last week, the backhoe was damn awesome, it had a problem with in and out of here. Guy did come up Friday, and he straightened that problem out, it was essential. So we got the backhoe going, we don't have a dump truck, and I think they're gonna take a while. They haven't even found a transmission. At the last meeting, the issue of a sweeper were brought up, and trying to purchase one. And, and, and in January, I gave a report on, on the need of a sweeper for the city and the value that we have to the city. And lately, if someone asked me what would a sweeper do? And I can say this, for anyone who pulls up to a stop sign or O A M statement and looks either, either way, they're gonna most likely see debris, grass, dirt, just a whole lot of clutter up against the, the gutters and the curb. Well, a sweeper designed to, for the brooms on the outside of the, to sweep it away from the curb, sweep it up under the sweeper, and picks it up, and get it eliminated, all that. The shape that the streets are in right now, you can't straighten them out by hanging, getting out there with a shovel and, and a weed. You're not gonna do it for one reason, no matter how many times we eat the grass, it's something to grind, and they come back. So by the time you do one section of town, and try to get to another one, you have the same problem up there. So a sweeper would cut that away, and even on some of the bad streets, one or two times up and down, would, would clean it completely, and then you can kind of go quickly to, to keep them clean. So that's the thing that I have on a sweeper. And like I told the City Manager, I think that we saw ninety percent of the look of other streets, it's, it, it definitely. It would make a hard user on time to clean, and it would get the job done. And, and the handout that you have, yeah, well, this is some of the things we've done in the past few months. It's not everything we've done, but it's some of, some of the stuff, the repetitions every week. And what we're saying, I'll take any questions that you might have. I don't have that handout.
City Manager, just saying to you.
Yes, sir.
One of the concerns that I have for our State Department is the recruiting process. What are we going to recruit employees?
The one of the things that we are going to do right before you open our proposed budget for twenty-four is to increase the salary for our street department and other employees who are making below the fifteen dollars an hour. We think it's appropriate that we increase our minimum starting salary to be able to attract and hopefully to retain our employees. I met with Mr. Porter and his staff last Thursday, because I knew that he was presenting before you all. It's was just to kind of give you more insight on some of the things that I'm here and seeing. And for the number of employees that they have to do all of the cleaning of grass, as well as if we have power replacement, if we have other things, I mean, you recognize that we only give four or five people to do it all for a city. So I'm also going to propose an upcoming budget, bringing in some additional staff for that department, because they're closely under staff to do the things that I expect they're going to do for our city.
Have we posted those jobs already?
No, I didn't want to get before, before I presented the budget before you all. The budget we're gonna present after later they sent to us the proposed budget, and that proposal will include some additional staff in that department. Yes.
All right. That's, that's my question. If you have any questions, I'll just report.
Let me, Councilor Moore, are you coincident, sorry, I'm scared to be cut twice, and as we, we tried to cut it probably Monday or Tuesday. We got stuck. I figured if you need to draw, we tried to cut it at the end of the week, got stuck. I figured a few more days, we can get it today, we got stuck. It's a basically a retention point, and it re-on went right on the research, so we trying to figure out another way to get it.
I appreciate you, Mr. Porter, with safety in mind, whenever your team can get to it. I already talked to the residents in that area and let them know that it was kind of soggy and wet, so they completely understand. So we'll tie it up. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
I want to, one more thing, the maintenance manager, mainly, I basically plans on retiring the first week in town. So we gonna have to do something therefore replacing him, and we probably need to get somebody in, someone in the last minute to get familiar with what he does and how he does it, therefore, keeping up the maintenance on the street department, whoever's holding the car and that and stuff.
Did you make the example where that was?
I did. I need to make with us first.
Mr. Porter.
Yes, sir.
If I can add in about our tour of time in first of the year, that is also critical to replace that and also to address access to our vehicles. We have, you know, as you all approved of us, the new vehicles that we have, and we're gonna need to make sure that we have preventive maintenance on those vehicles, schedule maintenance for those vehicles, and just make sure that we kind of have that going on for giving all of our vehicle, our vehicle replacement and vehicle management program, including for our vehicles.
Thank you so much. Councilor, do you have anything?
Yes, sir, I have a couple of things. First of all, thank you, Mr. Porter, for your report, but listening to your report and looking on you, I can see a lot of your problems. A lot of your problems is lack of manpower, number one. And number two, I see you, you, your lack of equipment, the lack of all your equipment is down, particularly one and other than. So those are two real issues that I know that will help you, force getting you working, but you need personnel. Now, the reason I'm saying that, I don't know, Mr. Manager, I'm gonna ask you, Mr. Porter, well, Mr. Sam is on, on, on my. I, I had a lady approach me by her friend, works out of town, but he wanted to get a job close to home. So I told her to tell him to come up to the city, and she said he's a hardworking guy. You know, I don't know whether, I hadn't talked to her since then, but I know one gentleman, I know that I hadn't talked to him, that I think would be a real access to the city if we, we didn't hire him. And I don't, that don't mean you're hiring, because, you know, I'm telling you, he, he need a job, and he got to handle whatever. But I know those ones in the, in the rest of it, he works at EU turn, and he want to get close to home.
I, I know for you, I have a profile also. And the beyond, which? The city's supposed, no, it's not, you know, the city's supposedly has a public outbreak somewhere, who knows? So I basically have seen all that stuff, or some of these companies, and, you know, he understands me. But I, I won't be, I know what you're saying, if maybe not, but it's, now, I can see what you're saying.
Yeah, because we don't have a public outbreak yet, that's putting the cops for us, but anyway, you know, that's personnel issue. And my next thing, you know, I know who need a sweeper, need a sweeper back. And I know in the past when we had a sweeper, I would see this sweeper. Nowhere within the historical history part of town. But we have streets on the outskirts of this city in real life, cause they clean it, and the sweeper would be real vital on those streets too. Let's, let's try not, not try to micro-indictive, let's not try to limit it to this historical part of the city, our city, our streets need.
I understand that, and I see, I see what you see, and that's, that's a plan, is I, I know, we basically sweeping up town, but on day and other time, when you take it all over town, and then it would make a difference. So that's part of the plan, once we get.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Councilor, do you have? I would just, I'd like to ask the question, and I appreciate everything, you know. The office right there in front of the right thing, are we responsible for it?
From the way it looks, it looked like it may be some kind of came in and made a round of this sewage line that went up there.
Something to stay to here.
No, it don't, it's not, this is a city manhole, so they gonna be something the city gonna have to do, if not a state. You know, if it came in and, and that manhole went there, then it probably would be a state.
Mr. Porter, I, I hope I'm wrong, but that's, I thought that was a state, that's a state, by the way. I got a call, I, I had a couple of people call me, and I catch myself, dawdling on, trying to go right over.
It's a state, by the way, it, it's a state, by the way. But, and I could be wrong, I'm just, I'm in the service that is piped up in the note of, of the deal that came in. Now, it could, now, I asked the director of the D O T, who he and Pam, to take a look at it, the politics, and he said, hey, I can get back with him tomorrow and find out what his policy, you know. But, uh, it would be a state, it would be a state, by the way, I'm just saying, with this, uh, manhole that's on the manhole, it could. Well, we'll find out.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Councilor, speak. Councilor, you done?
Yes.
Councilor, speak. Councilor, speak. Thank you, Mr. Porter, for the job that you do.
All right.
Now, one more thing, Mr. Porter. Now, the curbs, I'm sorry, the curbs that where the grass is going on, can we spray some, can we kill it on the curb?
Right.
Not, not the grass that needs to be edged.
You saying south, yeah, you can, uh, they used up the ground that we had last week, and I got one, another one ordered, I mean, uh, we can, yeah. We can actually do a warning down on, have the grater down just outside our bridge, that's what they were doing.
No, not the square of grass, that's really.
I know what you're saying. Yeah.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Next on our agenda is number, is we're on number six, that's Mr. Nelson Lawrence.
I come to move you all today, and as well, I don't know if they went on the road, and the road there, they ended at Maverick Hill House. And the road been padded, I got big potholes in it, in the back road, and to keep my car aligned, and it's just, just to put some gravel down, scrape the road, it ran in front of eight halls in the whole house there, and every time I go, the potholes, and big brother pothole, and to keep my car aligned, and I can't keep my car clean and that. And I got a lot of bushes and things there on the side of the road there, and I wish, I had told some of the city workers that P. Morgan, they had gotten to them, and for y'all to rest that, but I would be greatly appreciate it, okay?
What's the name of your street again?
Well, they went on the road, on the road.
On the side. Okay, hold on, sir. Okay, okay. Do we have that on our list?
We do, because, and then, um, they paid us a hundred dollars for it.
And would y'all please address that road there? I don't know, I face city taxes, but I don't know why they don't, they just, when they do play on the road, they just stop right there in front of Tyra House. So I down there, below Coach Holden, you come on up and turn them, go out this way, boy, to the right, and they don't know.
But the street, the street was resurfaced.
Mr. Johnson, he was, he put, Mr. Johnson, he did a lot of putting up there, I think, was it last year?
Two years ago.
Yeah, and, and he did bring some gravel down there, just to throw it in front of my house, and it's taken some money, but he did a lot of damage to that road. We should always have that, that road, you know, and I appreciate it, y'all, it's been great things, I appreciate it.
This is, this is, we're looking to look, Mr. Lawrence, I, I, but I, I think that right there is a, a great area. You're sitting right down the boundary of City Division County, uh, but we can, we can actually take a look at that. But I, I do know where the road got damaged, that road, hall and halls, probably two years ago.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
How you doing? I'm all right.
Next, we're, we're down to number seven, Darrell, I forgot who else is right, Smoke. Darrell Smoke, Jericho Classic, he's not here. We'll move down to number eight, Raw, E, I forgot who else is right, but Talora, is that correct?
Talora? Thank you, Senator. Thank you, Members of the House, for taking, for giving me the time to present this situation. For so many of you that don't know what Quell International is, is agricultural business. We produce and sell quail, we're the largest producer of quail in the United States, and we started business in nineteen eighty. Our first sales came in nineteen eighty-three, so we're celebrating four years this year. So we have a job, I mean, it's, it's not a high-end job, and it's agricultural job, it's, it's a job, uh, pay taxes and everything, so. And we appreciate very much the gas and the water that we can get from the city of people, this service is a must have. However, there had been some situation, we got a bill back in February of this year for, uh, ten thousand two hundred and thirty dollars and nineteen cents. The farm was completely empty, there were no birds during this time. The bill is from, this is service from zero one eighteen twenty twenty-three to zero two sixteen twenty twenty-three. Back in November of twenty twenty-two, we depopulated the farm for the first time in forty years we had locusts in this month. And the Georgia Department of Agriculture and the USDA are witness of this. Some of those vultures, or how you, whatever you call it, that perch on the telephone tower, got the avian influenza or avian flu, and in order to protect our birds, in our farm, we depopulated, were no birds. We killed everything, there was no news of this, but we basically euthanized every bird. The only thing that we had at it was the hatchery with the eggs, and we continued to process birds coming from our growers in seven different counties. We got growers in Jasper, Morgan, we had in Jackson, in Washington County, we, we are all over this central Georgia, basically. But we had no birds, so I went to see Laurie back there, that was still, and he gave the situation, he gave the case to Mr. Ronnie. And Ronnie went over there and looked at the mirror, and Ronnie's mirror, reading on the mirror on three seventeen twenty twenty-three was eight one four zero, however, the one in the bill reads two five nine two four. So it's a completely different number, where does it come? We don't know, we still have not identified this situation. However, this is not. However, this is not the first time that we got problems with the gas. Uh, particularly in the farm. So, I'm going back to twenty eighteen. In twenty eighteen, we were using nine hundred CCF in January. Then in February, we used two hundred and ten. In March, it jumped to twenty thousand six twelve. The deal went from one thousand twenty-seven, two hundred and thirty-three dollars to twenty-five thousand dollars. So, we paid five thousand six hundred and fifty-one in it. Then Larry Costello then made an investigation, and they clarified that somebody had an extra ticket to the three, so they credited twenty-three thousand seven one dollars and twenty cents. But it goes on, on August eleven of twenty eighteen, we went to twenty-six thousand dollars from a bill that the previous month was two thousand four fifty-five paid. So, he went ten more on the next one. And then in nineteen eleven of twenty eighteen, nineteen thousand nine seventy-five. Only twenty-three thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars were credited back by authorization of Larry Costello and Don, Don Booker, I never met this Booker or Booker. But they review it sometimes. I mean, I could go and spoil your night long, because the same problem happened in January of twenty nineteen, and June of twenty nineteen, and so these were just absolutely out of, out of control, I mean, like ten more from the record. So, we still paid some of the late charges and some of the things in there. So, but, you know, my, my concern is that this bill, when the farm is empty, uh, the last of the birds were raised in August of twenty twenty-two, and harvested to the plant in September of twenty twenty-two. Now, I was told by Mr. Ronnie that the city installed a grander meter in May. And between May and September, which is the harvest month of the year, we could not have used ten thousand dollars worth of gas. That's the usage of an battery. We were getting bills of six dollars, sixty dollars a week. I know there was a problem, and I kept telling you, and that's why Ronnie stole, went over there, because we were a drunk and honest, they said, this is not right, and we don't wanna free gas either, because this is going to end up in a chain reaction, and we're gonna end up in this situation, you know, with the super bill. So, I, I wanted to bring this up, because Larry was inclined to forfeit the bill and start over, but he was on his way out, and he didn't want to say that. I said Larry and I go a long time, I know him personally, because we served in the airport authority board for about nine years. And other than that, that's my, my knowledge of Larry. And Larry was very honest and very, I would say, he did not want to keep on his way out about impression and just wipe out that bill. So, I tried to contact the new city manager, but it has not been possible. I left a couple of messages with my phone number to see if we could discuss something, but it has not been.
I was having City Greenwood, I'm sorry, was gone, Tri County. Greenwood, Greenwood has down merged with Tri County, and Tri County actually rules our gas authority. Our gas department, I'm sorry. But what we'll do is, we'll be a mediator between you and Tri County, see how we can get this gas thing figured out.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Water or gas?
Gas, it's gas, not your gas.
Next on our agenda is unfinished business. I don't have any unfinished business at this time. Councilmore, you have nothing?
Oh, nothing, sir.
City manager, I'm city attorney, I'm sorry, do you have? City manager, do you have any unfinished business?
No, sir, I'm honest, sir.
City clerk, do you have any? Councilor, you have any?
Matt, this is, Councilor.
Councilor Smith?
I'm sorry.
Councilor Lee? All right, new business, uh, city attorney, we will need to go into executive session for one legal matter. Councilor Ford, you have a new business? City attorney, I think I just announced your new business.
I'm not gonna stop.
City clerk? Councilor, Councilor, Councilor Smith? Councilor Neil? At this time, we'll take public comments, do we have any public comment, Carl? No public comments? Well, no public comments at this time, I actually will go into executive session. I can take motion and say to do something.
Motion, say.
It's been second in a public discussion. No public discussion, all of those factors, you know, remain. You have a decision, thank you so much, you all are just giving us a free moment.